Welcome to the Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 Special Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. Mayor Pro Tem Silva is attending the meeting via teleconference. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953B, the public shall have the opportunity to address the City Council at the teleconference location. All votes during this teleconferencing session will be conducted by roll call vote. The teleconference location is accessible to the public. Members of the public may provide live, remote, oral public comment via the Zoom, via the city's Zoom video conferencing platform, or may attend the meeting in person. We require that all in-person attendees wear masks consistent with the Contra Costa County health orders. To provide a live, remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID and password are, the webinar ID is 82547053180, and the passcode is 220883. When I open the public comment period, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. This will alert the staff that you have a public comment that you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raise hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. If you're attending in person, please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Please wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only. Public comments relating to the study session item, Leisure Center for the Arts Strategic Plan, will be taken during the City Council consideration of the item. With that behind us, we'll move on to the study session on Leisure Center for the Arts Strategic Plan, and at this time I invite Arts and Recreation Director Kevin Safin to provide the staff presentation.
Good afternoon, thank you Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Safin, Director of Arts and Recreation. You can't see behind my mask, but I'm smiling because this is an exciting time for those of us on the city side as well as on the DRAA side to think about the future of the Leisure Center. So what we're going to talk about today is the Leisure Center for the Arts Strategic Plan, and what we're going to talk about in terms of agenda is, go ahead Matthew, I'm going to give you a very brief background. Our consultant, Michael Kaiser, who is with us, will talk about the plan overview. We'll take questions, open the public comment, and then come back to you for your feedback. And so what we're looking for from you, go ahead Matthew, is essentially this is the action that we're recommending is that, of course, you receive the report, one, and direct staff to work with the DRAA staff and board to implement what we're talking about, the high priority areas, which is in your report, the eight priority areas, and then we will come back to you at a future date to talk about actual implementation. So that's what we're looking for from you today, and we're super excited, like I said, to be here. So we can leave that slide up just as a reminder for you and for the audience, but I will start with background. So like I said, super exciting time to be part of this conversation about the future of the Leisure Center. We haven't had this discussion probably for 30 years about what's next, and so that's what we're doing today. So looking back though, about a year and a half ago, Peggy White, who's the Executive Director of the Diablo Regional Arts Association, DRAA, and I were talking about how do we come back? This was the height of the pandemic. How do we reestablish the Leisure Center as the premier performing visual arts venue in the region? Mind you, we didn't have a roadmap. Nobody did in terms of performing arts as how to get back. So Peggy went back and talked to her board president, Catherine Baker. I talked to the city manager. We all realized we need a plan for this. And then we also realized we don't know how to reopen art centers. We haven't done that before. We built art centers, we've opened them, we've run them, but we haven't reopened them. And so we realized we need some help. So we both agreed that we would split the cost of finding a consultant to help us figure this out for us. And so we put out an RFP. This is some text that's in your report, and you'll hear this a little bit from Michael, but the RFP said specifically, how are we going to reemerge from closure? How do we come back post-COVID? One, how do we reattract our audiences so they feel safe and producers feel safe? How do we attract new audiences? How do we do new programming? And how do we continue to be a vital economic driver? That's a lot. So again, we didn't have the answers, and so we put out the RFP, got a number of respondents, and we vetted them. We interviewed, we checked references, and I think I can say, hopefully without embarrassing Michael too much, we landed on the premier arts management consulting firm in the country. And so we're super fortunate, super fortunate to have them here with us. The work that Michael and his associate Matthew Cosergis have done is phenomenal. Michael used to run, run the Kennedy Center in DC, ran the Alvin Ailey Dance Theater, ran the Royal Opera House in London, and currently they're running the, on the artistic side, the Great Lakes, I'm going to get this right, Great Lakes Center for the Arts in Michigan. So not only are they consultants, but they're also current practitioners. So we couldn't have landed on a better consultant here. So again, I'm going to keep saying this, it's an exciting time. So we started this process with this group in early 2021, led by a planning team, which consists of Peggy and myself, Catherine Baker, Barry Gordon, who's also here, and Steve Woodhead, as well as Carolyn Jackson, who's our interim general manager at the Leisure Center. So an A-plus team running this project with, with Michael and Matthew. Extensive review, interviews, analysis, and recommendations have come from Michael, and you're going to hear about those tonight. The Board of DRAA received the recommendations, accepted them unanimously, enthusiastically, and suggested they come before you. So that's where we are tonight. Before I turn over to Michael, just want to see if there's any questions from you about process, about where we got to. Otherwise, I'm again excited to turn over to Michael.
Colleagues, any questions of Director Safin at this point?
Okay, so again, what you see in front of you are the recommended actions. Essentially, a headline would be, are we on the right track? And if we are, thumbs up. If not, we'd be happy to hear your direction. So with that, I'll turn over to Michael Kaiser.
Thank you, Kevin, and good afternoon. It's a great pleasure to be here. It was a real honor to work on this plan for the Leisure Center. It's truly a jewel of a theater, as you know, or several theaters. And really, what we were excited about is to explore the potential for this beautiful venue and think about how we move forward after this unprecedented time. We are in-
Welcome. If you wouldn't mind, sir, just putting the microphone up a little bit closer.
Sure.
There you go, and introducing yourself and welcome.
Oh, sure. I'm Michael Kaiser, and I'm the Chairman of the DeVos Institute of Arts Management at the University of Maryland. As Kevin mentioned, the purpose of this presentation, the purpose of our strategic planning, was to chart a course for the Leisure Center going forward. He mentioned that we were thinking about how do we recover from COVID. COVID has had a remarkable impact on virtually every cultural organization in this country, and this has been a real challenge for how, how do we deal with the COVID, but then how do we come out of COVID? COVID decimated our audiences. COVID also eradicated our pipeline of new audience members and new donors. How do we build that back? That's really a key issue. We had to think about what kind of work do we want to do at the Leisure moving forward? The Leisure has a wonderful history of great work, but what kind of work do we want to add to that going forward to make sure that we continue to build the reputation for the center, the fundraising capacity for the center, and of particular importance, the service we give to the community here in Walnut Creek and the county? And then we wanted to think about sustainability and financial sustainability. What do we need to do to make sure that we have the revenue we need to move forward so that we can continue to do this great programming but also can afford it? So all of that was in our back of the mind as we tried to put together this plan. The plan was not made by Matthew and myself. It was really a collaborative effort with the planning committee that Kevin mentioned, but there was input from a great number of people in the community, including all of you, I might say. And we're grateful for your time that you gave to me as we talked about what, how you saw the Leisure Center moving forward, and that really did motivate the work we did. We talked with all of the various cornerstone producers, all those organizations that are, that perform regularly at the Leisure Center. We talked to Leisure Center staff. We talked to other key stakeholders in the community. That input was critical, not just to forming an opinion about where the Leisure Center is, but to make sure that the plan we develop is going to take the center where you want it to go. The framework we used, the steps we followed to do this plan were very simple. We started by looking at the mission statement for the Leisure Center to make it clear to us what the whole point of the Leisure Center is. In fact, we developed with the committee a new mission statement, and I'll read it. "The mission of the Leisure Center for the Arts is to drive excellence, innovation, and diversity in the arts through performances, exhibitions, and educational programming that establish the Leisure Center as the artistic destination for everyone in Walnut Creek and the region." That mission guides the entire planning process. We then did a very thorough look at the environment in which the Leisure Center operates. We'll talk about that more in a moment, but we wanted to get a sense of what are the forces that are driving arts organizations around the country, here in the Bay Area? So we had to think a great deal about the environment. And then we did an audit of where are we as an organization? What are our strengths and our weaknesses? That's where the interviews were particularly helpful to us, as we listened to all of you about what you felt were the strengths and weaknesses of the Leisure Center that we need to think about in our strategies. The fourth section of the plan was then the strategies themselves. That's what I'll focus on most today. And then we created a very detailed implementation plan. There are an awful lot of strategic plans that sit on the shelf because they read, you know, they're interesting read, and then you don't really do anything with it. That's not the kind of work we try to do. So we developed a very detailed work plan. What specific steps have to happen when and who's going to do them? And then finally, we did a financial plan. We looked five years out and said, what should the financials look like for the Leisure Center if we pursue the strategies in the order that they are determined by the implementation plan? That's the structure of the plan. I read the new mission to you. Let me turn now to the environment. And the environmental analysis that we pursued had several different pieces. Thank you. We looked at the challenges facing all cultural organizations in the United States. We looked at the challenges particularly facing presenting organizations like the Leisure Center, performing arts centers, if you will. We looked specifically at government-owned organizations. Kevin mentioned that I was the president of the Kennedy Center for 14 years. I've experienced working in a government-owned facility. It's different than running one that's owned privately. And then we looked very specifically at the arts ecology of the Bay Area because we had to be very clear on what, who are our customers, how are they changing, what are the peer organizations doing, and therefore, what must we think about as we try and develop a strategy? All of that was part of this environmental analysis that we felt was extremely important to understand as we move forward. We then turned to the, to some of the detail here. We, in terms of factors that are affecting the arts broadly throughout the US, obviously COVID-19 has had a huge impact. So has the focus on anti-racism that we are all in the arts trying to address and that society is trying to address and that we had to think about in our work here. We also had to keep in mind the reduction in arts and humanities education in our public school systems. That's a 35-year trend throughout the country that has a big impact on our audiences. We had to think about the aging of the traditional arts donor base. Those individuals who've been the key arts donors in city after city in this country are aging, and as they age and turn the philanthropic decision-making for their families over to their children, we find that many of the children don't have the same allegiance to the arts that their parents have had, which means we're facing a cliff. That is, we need to develop new donors. We can't just rely on those who've been our cornerstone donors in the past. At the same time, we face a loss of subscribers. Fifty years ago, it was not uncommon for a symphony, for example, to sell 70, 80, or even 90% of their tickets to subscribers. As people's lives have changed, people don't subscribe as much anymore. Now we're happy to have 30% or 25% of our tickets sold on subscription. That has a really big impact on the way we program, how we price our tickets, and especially the cost of marketing. We had to be thinking about that. And then finally, we had to think about the role of electronics in the arts. We've learned during COVID that electronics can play a huge role, but in truth, electronics played a very big role in the arts even before COVID, as the statistic on the slide suggests. In 2017, before we even knew of COVID, more people in America were getting the arts on the internet than were getting them in person. So what we're finding is that this puts pressure on a center like the Leisure Center to think about how do we, on the one hand, embrace technology, but on the other hand, also do programming that's so important and exciting that people wish to come and be part of it and not just participate occasionally by zooming in. As we looked at other presenting organizations, one of the things we noticed that was really, I think, important for the committee, for the planning committee, was that many other presenters with fewer seats than the Leisure Center, and in many cases, smaller budgets, had a signature series every year of some really leading artists who galvanized the community, who helped sell tickets and subscriptions, and particularly helped to excite donors to make them want to participate. So when you look at just these four, and these are just a random four, you see some major names, Wynton Marsalis, and Patty Lepone, and Kenny Rogers, and Joshua Bell, and Judy Collins. And these are artists who go to these mid-sized venues, and they really do excite the community. And we realized that we were not getting these kinds of individuals very often coming to the Leisure Center, and it's something we wanted to think about, particularly as we try and build the private fundraising capacity of the organization. We also spent a good amount of time, as I mentioned, looking locally, and this is, there are many different analyses we did, but one very important one was to study the population changes in Walnut Creek. As you well know, Walnut Creek is becoming fairly rapidly a very diverse community, and that means that as we think about our programming, we have to be thinking about how do we serve a variety of, of communities, and how do we make sure that the mix of programming speaks to not just our traditional audience, but also to new audiences who now make up a full third of our community? All of that environmental analysis then led us to look internally, and we wanted to understand, what, where are we strong and where are we weak? What are we doing to address these, these issues that we uncovered in the environmental analysis? We did about 40 interviews. We sent out a survey to all the rental clients. We reviewed a great deal of information as we put together this fairly lengthy internal Some key conclusions. Number one, most important, the Leisure Center has been a really important artistic home to many artists and arts organizations over the last three decades. It's a really important art center. You've been very well managed, and you've enjoyed real fiscal stability as an organization. Also, in large thanks to you and the city who have, who have helped support the Leisure Center. The Bedford Gallery is a truly important visual arts presenter. It's really done incredibly good curatorial work and, and is a leading light in the visual arts community and something that we want to protect and expand upon in the years ahead. We have three really wonderful venues that can accommodate a full range of arts, so we're not limited by our facilities. We have a great partner in DRAA who raises money and has also helped to bring some special performers and performing groups to the Leisure Center. So that's a wonderful asset to have. We also noticed some weaknesses. One of them was that each of the variety of organizations within the center, including Center Rep and the Bedford Gallery, et cetera, operated in silos. That is, there was very little cross, cross-art form programming, and that can be some of the most exciting and important programming. Again, going back to my Kennedy Center days, I can say that when we combined several art forms into a festival, for example, I mean, I could imagine here a festival of Latin American culture, of theater and music and dance, that I think would enliven a large portion of our community, but tying it together with visual arts, that we could do something very special here that I think would draw visitors certainly from, from here, but also, I think, from throughout the Bay community and Bay Area, and also hopefully from further abroad, further afield than that. I can tell you that when we did our major projects at the Kennedy Center, we had people come from all 50 states to Washington to see them. So I'd love to see that same kind of reach for the Leisure Center. We realized that there hadn't been a great investment in major presented performances. That is, we were extremely modest on the amount we would spend, and you'd say, well, that shows the fiscal responsibility. But on the other hand, when you do those few exciting moments each year that, that are exclamation points in your season, not only do they sell a lot of tickets, but they also then help you raise money. So actually, they can help your financial situation. And, you know, we had a first of our, the artist that we brought, Leanne Rhimes, came here, essentially sold out the house, I think gave a great show. She's a wonderful artist, excited people, and if you do, not 100 of those a year, but if you do five, or six, or eight of those a year, it changes the way people perceive your center, and it draws people from further afield. That is, it brings you some people from 15 miles away, and 30 miles away, and 50 miles away, and that's exactly what we'd like to accomplish. So we think that there's an opportunity to add, not to revolutionize the work of the Leisure Center at all, but to add some select programming that we think would really have a dramatically positive impact on the way we serve the community, the way we build the reputation for the Leisure Center and therefore for Walnut Creek, but also help ourselves financially. So that internal analysis led us to the strategies. And so let's talk about some of the strategies, but let's start with a summary of the strategies, which I'll read. There we go. "The strategy for the Leisure Center is to evolve over time from a rentals-focused venue to a nationally recognized, leading, mid-sized presenter of great art and artists, and the home of a dynamic arts education program. This will require the addition of new curated performance series, expanded educational programming, and a growing number of collaborations. This rich new programming will be supported by an aggressive new approach to marketing, taking better advantage of coordination among all professional organizations working in the center. By taking greater ownership of the art presented in its venues and marketing it effectively, and by addressing its governance and management structure, the Leisure Center will significantly improve the opportunity for the Diablo Regional Arts Association to attract a larger and more engaged set of donors. Establishing a clear artistic voice and using its newfound visibility to build its institutional family will allow the Leisure Center to truly occupy its role as the artistic home for all residents of Walnut Creek and the region." That's a general statement of strategy. Then there are about 30 pages of detail behind that statement that support it, but we'll only go through a few items today. We'll start with programming. And we wanted to make sure that, number one, and most important, that we had a longer-term artistic plan that explained what the great projects are going to be over the next several years, so that we could plan projects with both the Leisure Center, with DRAA, with the Bedford Gallery, with Center Rep, with the City Arts Commission, and very importantly, with the cornerstone producers. Those are the organizations like Chamber Music San Francisco, and the California Symphony, et cetera, Smooin Ballet, et cetera, who are regular performers at the, the center and who really give us a lot of our flavor and some fantastic performances. We want to make sure that we have a longer-term plan so that we can apply for grants, that we can excite donors about what's coming up in the future, and we can make sure that our seasons make sense financially and artistically. We want to establish Leisure Center Presents, which is a subscription series featuring major artists like Leanne Rhimes, like Dance Theater of Harlem, who's coming up later this spring. We want to mount some special programs, like a series of master classes. Master classes are when a great performer comes and doesn't perform themselves, but rather teaches three, or four, or five really wonderfully talented aspiring professionals. There are so many great artists who find their way into San Francisco to perform with the symphony, or to perform on, on the theater stages, et cetera. How great in their night off to bring a soloist who's performing with a symphony to come and do a master class with three or four aspiring young musicians for an audience? It teaches the youngsters well, but it also is really educational to the audience to learn about what that great artist is thinking as they make their work. We wanted to make sure that every year we start to build up the number of what we'll call major aspirational projects. That's something like the Latin American Arts Festival I mentioned. That's something that's big and special, to do a couple of those a year to, again, to amplify our role as a leading arts organization. And then we wanted to do some speaker series and roundtables. We already have the great Newsmaker Series. We'll have a Newsmaker event tonight at the center, but we want to have others, and we would talk about having roundtables of great executives, or roundtables of arts leaders, or political leaders, or sports figures, so that we can, again, bring a different kind of audience to the Leisure Center who might not be so interested in music and dance, but might be interested to hear from sports figures or business leaders. Also in terms of programming, we want to make sure that all of this programming is coordinated, and so we are proposing to create what's called a programming committee that would be made up of the leadership of the Leisure Center and board members from DRAA, and together to talk about this longer-term plan, to vet the long-term plan, to make sure that it was exciting, and it was reasonable, and that it was supportable. We want to make sure the Bedford Gallery is truly integrated into the programming of the Leisure Center by allowing the curator of the Bedford to work with the various entities within the Leisure Center to make sure that we're really making maximum use of the Bedford Gallery. And for Center Rep, we want to make a slight change to the model, where we don't necessarily produce all of the work ourselves, but we enter into collaborations with some of the other great theater companies in the region, and we think that would allow us to save some money, to showcase great work, and to take the money we save to invest in some major productions, including to make sure that the Christmas Carol really looks and feels as excellent as it needs to be to keep on attracting an audience. All of this programming is then supported by a group of education strategies. We really want to build on the role of the Leisure Center to educate our children and our adults, but particularly our children in this community. And the key thing we want to do there is to coordinate with, with the Center for Community Arts and make sure that the arts education programming is really tied together to take maximum advantage of all the work the Leisure Center can do and that the Center for Community Arts does. And so we want to work together to bring teaching artists into the schools and to enhance our matinee program, and to partner with the public schools on programming that's relevant to the students and families at that school. And we also want to eventually create a coordinated regional approach to arts education so that every child in the region gets a smart, reasonable, and thoughtful arts education. We want to make sure the Leisure Center is an active participant in building a strong arts education program. All of these programming strategies need to be marketed, and we created a whole series of marketing- of marketing strategies. One key idea is to have one unified brand. We don't want to be marketing the Lesher Center separately from Center Rep, separately from DRAA, separately from the Bedford Gallery. We need to make sure that people understand the richness of what's happening in that building and that we're all united under one marketing program. We'd love to create a subscriber program that would include our Lesher Center Presents, these special attractions, but also the work of Center Rep, and also the work, frankly, of our Cornerstone Producers. We're hoping to bring them into a subscription as well, if they choose to be. That will certainly be up to them. We want to build our relationship to the press, certainly here in Walnut Creek and the Bay Area, but we also want to start to look for some more regional and national press. The more people who hear about the Lesher Center, the easier it will be to bring the artists we'd like to present at the Lesher Center. And we want to make sure that we do a thorough return on investment evaluation on all marketing spends. We want to make sure that the way we're spending marketing money is smart and effective, because the way people are getting their information these days about the performing arts is changing very rapidly. And we want to make sure that we're changing with the needs of our community and that our approaches to marketing are forward-looking rather than backward-looking. In addition, we want to think about something we call institutional marketing. That is, the marketing of the center as a whole. How are we going to make people in the community say, the Lesher Center is so exciting, I'm so, I so much want to get involved with them? And our experience is that what creates that kind of excitement is when every year you can have three or four or five or six major productions, or announcements, or events that get people to say, this is what I want to do. This is how I want to participate in the arts. And so we're going to create an institutional marketing calendar, an 18-month rolling calendar of those events and moments that we think are the ones that are going to get people really excited about the Lesher Center. And then finally, we're going to create something called Lesher Center Ambassadors. This will be a small group, three, four, five, high-profile individuals who will lend their visibility to the center in their social media postings, in our special events like galas or special performances, who do something on our, write something for our website. But we're going to try and attract a few high-profile artists who are going to help us really build visibility for the Lesher Center. If we do all of this marketing, it's going to really help us build our development effort. And we have a whole series of strategies of working with DRAA to try and create a more robust, they've done a great job at DRAA of building a fundraising program, and we just want to be able to be helpful to add to it. And we think if we build the programming name recognition and the marketing for the Lesher Center, that's going to help DRA raise more money. We're going to create some special events for donors to make it clear why it's fun to participate at the Lesher Center. We want to make sure that there's really strong communication between DRAA and the programming planning of the center. So it's really about how do we better support DRAA so that they can do the job that they've been doing so well, but they have more tools and they have a better support from the center. In addition to these fundraising strategies, we then need to be thinking about our staffing strategies. We want, obviously, over time, to hire a new permanent general manager. We're thrilled Carolyn is there, but we want to make sure we do a search for a general manager. We want to make sure that we start to have succession plans for the key leadership roles. But we do want to hire a few key people. Chief among these is a new head of marketing. We haven't had that at the Lesher Center. We need that. We need to be able to communicate in a thoughtful way. Arts marketing these days is a very sophisticated field, and we need someone with real knowledge to help us build visibility for the Lesher Center moving forward. Thank you. We've developed a new organization structure, which includes the positions that we're suggesting, and we, as you'll see, the programming committee is the committee that links together the staff, leadership of the Lesher Center and the board of DRAA. Oops, no, we can keep going. We can go. Thank you. So we then developed, with all of these strategies, and again, there are many more, we developed a detailed set of implementation and financial plans. We can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. We created a detailed implementation plan, and we created a detailed financial plan. We're not reviewing these today because there's so much detail, it's very hard to review in this kind of timeframe. But I did want to say that our five-year forecast does show that the institution can pursue the program expansion we're talking about while also ensuring stability. And we think, particularly coming out of COVID, this will be important. When we really can move forward from COVID, every cultural organization in the Bay Area is going to be trying to rebuild their customer base and their donor base at the same time. The way we're going to do that successfully for the Lesher Center is to start with strength of programming and to market that programming well, because that's really what we're going to need to address those many people who are going to also be wooed, not just by every cultural organization, but every cruise line, every hotel, every sports league. Everyone's going to be trying to rebuild their customer base. We're only going to do that successfully if we have the kind of performers and performances that people really want to see. Can we get to the next slide?
It's changed on the computer.
There it is. Okay. Thank you. And then finally, and very importantly, and this is really where we'd love input from you specifically, although we love your input on everything, is we did make a list of the eight, coming out of the strategies, the eight key implementation priorities for this year. One was to create this longer-term artistic plan, to make sure that we really have an idea, not just what we're doing now, but we're doing in the future, so that we can plan our activities, plan our financials, plan our marketing, and plan our fundraising. We want to establish the programming committee that will be a coordinating body between DRAA and the Lesher Center staff. We want to build the Lesher Center Presents subscription series, which we've started, but we want to continue to build that. We want to establish a working group to evaluate our relationship with the Cornerstone Producers. Again, the Cornerstone Producers are central to the planning for the Lesher Center. California Symphony, Festival Opera, et cetera, are simply vital to the healthy programming for the Lesher Center. And we want to make sure that we're working together, that they're getting what they need from the Lesher Center. We want to build one unified brand, and we want to represent that brand on our website, which will be redesigned and is currently under development. We want to create this institutional marketing calendar of major events over the next year and a half that we think are going to re-excite our community. We want to make sure that the development effort is coordinated, that it's not separate development efforts for the gallery, for the rep, and for DRAA, but that this is one unified effort. It's very hard to go to one prospect with three different requests. We really need to think this through and coordinate this work. And then we want to really think through our staffing plan to make sure that we have the staff we need to pursue the strategies that are included in this plan. This is a very brief summary of the strategic plan, which is quite a long document. Thank you for letting me talk about it today, and we would very much love to hear questions and comments.
I will turn to my colleagues and ask if they have any questions for Mr. Kaiser. And starting with our Council of DRAA liaison, Councilmember Haskew.
Also, the person who worked on the Arts Vision Task Force 20 to 30 years ago, who was also on the board of the Diablo Regional Arts and houses some Festival Opera singers, and we just housed the Young American Composer in Residence for California Symphony. So you can tell from that introduction of myself that we have been fascinated and supportive of the Lesher Center and the arts in this city for a long, long, long time. I have a couple of questions. Some are kind of finding out the age differences on the test about whether, how much people are transitioning to the internet. Is there any kind of breakdown in that about the ages of the people that are moving?
It's interesting, during COVID, no one had a choice, right? So the people of all ages were on the internet. I would say early on, it was mostly younger people and people, let's say, 30 and younger who were transferring to the internet. That's changed. But the challenge of the internet is that no one's paying for the programming on the internet. So while during COVID, many theater companies, dance companies, music ensembles, et cetera, were putting work online to speak to their constituents, people were not giving the money back for it. And so we're in this very difficult conundrum of how do we embrace technology and use its ability to converse with a great deal of people while knowing full well that if they're just watching online, we're probably not getting paid for that work very well. And so it's, at this point, a very broad spectrum. I believe that when people feel it's safe to go back into the theater, there are many people who will be thrilled not to watch the arts on the internet anymore. But there's still going to be a large number of younger people who are very excited by it.
Which gets me to another question. How critical is it that we, I make it social when people come here?
So critical. From my experience, there's maybe 70 to 80% of our audience who come for a social experience more than they come for an artistic experience. And particularly, that's true of a lot of donors. And so it's important that they feel like this is a fun and fun place to visit, and that they see their friends and that they engage in social activity. That, of course, was decimated during COVID. We're one of the few social activities left in the world where it really do bring people back together again. And I know we're not supposed to mention sports in San Francisco this week. Sports do that. The arts do that. And religion does that, but religion to a much smaller extent than it has. So the social experience is critical. And so also embedded in the plan are doing things like affinity nights and craft beer nights and such to add a social element to the work we do at the Lesher Center.
Thank you. You mentioned the programming that we're doing this year. How long does it take before that really begins? And this is a bad test case during COVID, I know. How long does it take to get that really rolling in terms of people looking forward to it and causing it to sell out?
Ideally, we have a good year to get people excited about programming before it starts. This year, we didn't have that luxury. But for this coming season, our plan is, in the middle of May, to do a major season announcement that talks about the next year. And I think that's really, you're going to start to see that gets people talking, A, because it's going to be something to look forward to, but B, because it's not just going to be the Cornerstone Series. We're hoping it's everything from the center that's going to happen next year. So you're going to hear about so many, such a great range of work. And we think that when taken together, that is going to get people to realize that they have a true jewel here in the Lesher Center.
Which kind of gets me to my next question, because you emphasized with the marketing that it was to bring the city-related and DRA-related organizations together, and you also mentioned the Cornerstone Groups. How are they going to get involved in this big marketing push?
As you recall, one of the eight key priorities was to create a committee of the Cornerstone Groups, to bring them together with the Lesher Center team, to actually develop exactly how they're going to get involved in the season announcement, how they're going to get involved in marketing activities moving forward, so they get, hopefully, a big marketing boost from that participation.
Cool. And my last question is, we have in your committee for programming, you have DRAA and you've got essentially the stage people, the theater people. How do we resolve if there's a disagreement between the two components? Is that, do we know how that is? We also assume they will never disagree because they're all very nice, very cooperative people.
Extremely lovely people. But ultimately, that's the general manager's job and the reporting up through Kevin, so that's when the final decision will have to get made. The good news, though, when you plan three years ahead, is that there's really room for every idea. One idea that you have, that's wonderful, but you can't do this year, maybe you do that next year. So when you create that three-year plan, it really opens up the field, and you end up with much less disagreement, because people can get what they want, they just get it a little bit in a different year. That makes sense.
That makes super sense. Thank you very much for all the work you've done. I've really enjoyed watching the result roll out.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you, and thank you for the work on this. This is interesting and, like, well, I've been quite involved in the arts over the course of certainly the last 20 years as well, being on the Arts Commission. We're pretty myopic here in, I think, in all of our cities. We see what's happening with the Lesher Center and arts here. We hear a little bit about what's happening in San Francisco, in San Jose, maybe a little bit of Broadway in New York. But is what's happening in California a good representation of what's happening in all these different theater groups across the country, some of which are in states that, well, frankly, don't care as much about social distancing and some of the other complications?
It's remarkable how similar the fate of arts organizations right now are, whether you're in Florida, or Alabama, or California, or Michigan. We work all over the country. We also work around the world. Everyone is suffering from the same challenges. And to be honest, every organization, even if you're in a state that doesn't promote mask-wearing or social distancing, the arts organizations are promoting that. And because the artists won't go on stage if the theater company doesn't have very rigid and important protocols for safety. So you see much more similarity across different kinds of states than you might expect in the arts.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. And then, the, marketing was my background and seeing some of the areas that you're talking about here, I think are vitally important. I think you're right on in many of these cases. And my suspicion is that we are going to be losing 10 to 15% of a more, perhaps, senior population that may never return. They're just not going to feel comfortable for a variety of different reasons. So it's going to be more critical than ever, of course, hitting this, a younger generation. But when I've talked in the past, how can we get some of these plays, the runs, for example, that seem to really be so critical to driving in so many clients into the Lesher Center? I think about Miss Saigon, for example. There's been some of the more, the newer generation of musicals as opposed to some of the old standards from the 1950s and 60s. And it's great, and we see a completely different audience. How can we get those? Because I keep hearing about these anti-compete clauses that don't allow these plays and these theater groups, or not even theater groups, the ability to even have the play in the first place because San Francisco is within 50-mile radius or whatever. How can we do that?
We do that by building relationships over time with the artists. And one of the reasons we want to make sure that we're reaching out and bringing more art to the Lesher Center, that is, maybe national name recognition art, is to start to build relationships with the artists who want to start working here. Once they come, there are many artists who don't know what the Lesher Center is or have not performed here and don't know the beautiful facility and the wonderful welcome they get here in Walnut Creek and the wonderful audiences here. We need to expose more artists here so that more of them want to come. There will be some titles we just won't get here. They will go to San Francisco as opposed to Lesher Center. But that doesn't mean we're limited. I had the same problem running the Kennedy Center, believe it or not. I could not get certain titles that they were non-compets or national tours, et cetera. But we got a goodly number of great productions, and we also produced some that ended up going to Broadway. So we're very bullish about the opportunity to bring some of the most potent and exciting productions here to the Lesher Center. But it requires reaching out a bit more, I think, than the Lesher Center has, and really building those relationships outside and in New York where a lot of these decisions are made.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. And I don't have that much background with the arts, so I'm glad I'm on with you guys. But I really appreciate the work that you guys put into this. There's a lot of really great ideas in here that made sense to me. I did have a question on the- I did have a question on the programming committee. Does that include Bedford Gallery and those other functions? So they're in the programming committee?
Yes.
And has there been broad buy-in into that concept?
We haven't started the committee yet. That's coming up, hopefully in the next couple of months. But what we want to make sure is that the full range of programming at the Lesher Center is really considered in this longer-term period. Because it's not just about performances. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is that there hasn't been the tie-in between the Bedford Gallery and the performing series. So I'll use my example of Latin American culture festival. I would want a very wonderful visual component to that as well. That takes planning, that takes thoughtfulness, that takes the buy-in of the curator of the Bedford Gallery. That's not going to happen by accident, that's going to happen from conversation. So yes, we need to bring all the pieces together in one room.
And as I was thinking about it, you know, most of my trips to the Bedford had been, and two trips to the Lesher have been with children in school groups. Have you thought about how your programming can integrate with the school curriculum on an annual basis? I know there is a, you know, a traditional focus in February on the Black experience.
Black History Month.
And then the gold rush and the Spanish, you know, influence in California. Have you thought about that side of it?
Absolutely. And I apologize, I didn't mention that, that fact. That's on what, the bullets in this presentation about how we want to coordinate with the public school system to make sure that the work we're bringing, particularly the work we're bringing for families and children, speaks to the curriculum. And what we'd very much like to do eventually is to organize with all the various producing arts organizations and the Lesher Center to create a systematic arts education that does tie into curriculum. That's going to be a longer-term goal, but one that we hope that is achieved in the next five years.
Yeah, that would be awesome. Thinking about the marketing, we also have a convention and visitors bureau here in town. Have you guys talked to them about opportunities for?
Absolutely. But to get the convention and visitors bureau really interested means you have to have the work that's going to speak to convention visitors. And that's, again, when we think about this special series with major artists, why it's important, because it's those artists who are going to speak to conventions. And, but what we really want to do is coordinate with them to become part of the marketing for Walnut Creek. We want the Lesher Center to be front and center when it comes to how the reputation for, for Walnut Creek is made around the country.
Okay. And then last, this is kind of getting down into the weeds a little bit, but the positions like a marketing person and things like that, those are not necessarily positions that are typically found in city government.
Correct.
Are those envisioned to be, or is this a detail that hasn't been, are they envisioned to be city employees, DRAA employees?
I think they end up being city employees, but they would not necessarily, and I'm not sure of the legality, and Kevin can correct me, but these would be people with expertise that would have to be brought into the system as opposed to people who just happen to be in the government and like to do marketing. Is that a fair way of saying it, Kevin?
All right, that's, those are my questions. I really appreciate the work you guys are doing. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kaiser, thank you very much for the presentation. I am sitting in your neck of the woods. I'm in Washington, DC. So I should, I feel like I should run over to the Kennedy Center and enjoy it. You've inspired me again. Thank you for the work that you've done over the last eight months, or longer than that, about eighteen months. I appreciate it. The Lesher Center is the, one of the jewels in Walnut Creek's crown, and we want to sustain it, maintain it, and allow it to evolve so that it continues to be an integral part of our community for so many reasons. My question is actually going to build on Cindy Darling's, and it's really about the staffing. It seems like the two positions that are so critical to being successful in this will be the new general manager and the new marketing director, because we're basically pivoting and saying, you have to be different. And are you helping us to outline what we're, we're going to be looking for?
Yes, I'm, I'm engaged to work for the next five months with the Center to help to implement several of the priorities that you see listed on that last page.
So it would include job descriptions and experience and skills and what we need to be looking for?
Absolutely right.
Right. And I'm very excited about all that you are recommending and look forward to being, even perfectly participating in it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for your thoughtful work and your collaboration on this. Most of my questions were asked and answered. I had one, it seemed the focus was of the report and the recommendation was to focus more on us being a producer as opposed to a landlord leasing out to production companies. Can you expand on that? Is there a way that we could still be successful and achieve our goals with the current model or why we need to shift?
We're not really changing the model so much, we're changing the weights. That is, DRAA has been bringing important artists to the, the Lesher Center. What we're just doing is slightly changing the weights to adding another six, eight, or ten performances across a whole year that are going to bring more visibility. So we're not sort of saying, throw out the old model, it's a whole new model. We still are, really want to work with the cornerstone producers. We still really want to do arts education. We still want to serve local arts groups. What we want to do is amplify that work by every year having a few nights that are going to be a little bit larger scale. So it's not so much changing the model as adding a few pieces that we think will help tremendously changing the financial model, because it will make it so much easier to raise money.
That's helpful. Thank you for that clarification. And before we open it up for public comment, I wanted to invite the DRAA president and, one more question from councilmember Askew.
So my concern is not the success of the whole plan, because that's, that's, that's stupendous. My concern is how do we boost it forward? This is a, this is a tough time for all of us now, and all of the inflows will be in the future. How do we, how do, which comes first? How do we make the chicken and the egg simultaneous?
It's a great question, and thank you for it. I think what we're doing is we're really going to have in middle of May, a major, major, major announcement about all the programming for next year. And I think that's going to galvanize people, and that's going to start the chicken and egg happening. It doesn't all happen in one year, it doesn't all happen with one announcement, it's about continuity. But I'm very optimistic that the programming we announce for next season will get people really excited and start this whole recovery from COVID in a major way.
Any other questions, Mr. Kaiser? I'm not seeing any. I'd like to invite Catherine Baker and Peggy White, if they'd like to address this, and then we'll open it up to public comment.
Thank you so much. I'm Catherine Baker, president of the Diablo Regional Arts Association, and I do have my good partner here as well, Peggy, who will also speak to you separately. First, we want to say on behalf of the board of the DRAA, thank you to you and to all the city staff who participated in this whole process. It may be obvious now that we see the end result and how substantive it is and understand so well some of the exciting recommendations that, gee, this was absolutely the thing to do, but I don't think that was a foregone conclusion. The city and, and we, we all could have said, well, let's just turn the lights back on when COVID is over and go back to everything we've done before and, and that'll be it. And it's just very exciting and grateful for your investment financially with us and of your time. It was a significant amount of time, and your team was a great partners to have in this. And we were so grateful to bring such clearly a high caliber consultant who has just been so tremendously helpful. Also want to say on behalf of the board that we have adopted unanimously this report and its recommendations. I just wanted to take a moment to say why. And we, we at the DRAA will always be enthusiastic, happy, hard-working partners with the city for the success of the LCA. But we really did believe that in reopening after the pandemic, it was such an opportunity to ask ourselves, how can we get the absolute most out of this terrific resource we have in our community? And that is the Center. And that this report was essential to doing that. And we liked that that was the question. It wasn't how do we reopen singularly, it was how do we get the most out of it for our community? And we see a path to not only artistic excellence, but robust educational enrichment through the arts that we're looking forward to participating in. And the collaboration. You know, one thing that really stands out in this report is the collaboration across the cornerstone partners, between the city and the DRAA, and so many more. And those are features that really appealed to us as a board. And then finally, another reason we adopted it is because it's intended to not be the type of strategic plan that looks great in a binder and goes back on the shelf while you return to maybe tinkering around the edges of what you might do differently, if that. That this really is a plan that comes with steps to execution. And I, everyone on the board will hear this from me constantly. I think it's a great plan, but if we're not actually executing and implementing it, it's, it's unfulfilling. And we have that. We do believe it is a roadmap to that type of new future and doing so much more at the Center. We're excited about it. Which brings me to my last point I want to share with you on behalf of the board, is we know this will take work. This will take more work and financial commitment. Our sleeves are already rolled up. We, every single board member is very excited about what the future can bring and how, how we have this roadmap. And so you can count on us to continue to be partners. We know that it will require more fundraising on our part, but we also know what will be possible in fundraising and support because of the, the changes that we're thinking about making through this. So we're so grateful that you and the city have the forethought to undertake this process and partner with us on it. Again, it could have been something you did all on your own, we could have done it on our own, we could have done it without outside partners, and we're thrilled that we were able to come to this point. And we're always going to be a resource to you. So we thank you for that. And with that, I want to invite Executive Director of the Diablo Regional Arts Association, we all know, Peggy White, to also say a few words. Thank you.
After Peggy's way down when you're five one. First of all, so nice to be here, Mayor Francois, member of the council. I, when Kevin started out today with his enthusiasm for this project, it has been such a joy to work with the planning committee. And how lucky are we to get Michael Kaiser and the Devos to take this on? They are in a class of their own, and they have been so collaborative. It's really been joyful work. And I could not be more excited about the evolution of the Center to evolve from rental focus venue, rentals will still happen, but to really be a nationally recognized and mid-sized presenter and co-presenter, perhaps, for the cornerstone producers. There's so much potential. My head is spinning. It's with all the exciting things that are possible. And one unified brand for the Lesher Center can be powerful, just powerful. For dear perspective, to work side by side with the city to help create an institution of philanthropy, we can help raise more money to support the arts and retain all more donors, attract more donors, is over, I'm over the moon excited about that. And we treasure, some people treasure Lesher Center, and there are future generations we have anyone involved, so we're very excited about that. And I'm excited about the cornerstone producers' involvement, because there are some standout companies that are critical to the economic sustainability of the Lesher Center and the economic vitality of our region. We can't wait to start working with them on the planning committee that involves them as well. In closing, I just want to say we're steadfast to the commitment to be a great partner to the city. We are so honored and humbled to be the nonprofit partner of that, of the amazing Lesher Center for the Arts. And I don't, I keep saying this because over these last two years, we have to continue to put one foot in front of the other and onward and upward.
Thank you so much, Ms. White, Ms. Baker. Going to open it now for public comments. And if any members of the public are on Zoom and would like to address the council on this item, please use the raised hand feature, press star nine if you're connected by audio only. If you're attending in person, we ask that you please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. At this time, we'll take in-person comments, and then I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide remote comments. Not seeing any in person, oh, we may have one. Thank you. Don't be shy. Come on down. You could fill that out afterwards.
Awesome. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Renee Dewis Moran, and my, I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. And my relationship with the Lesher Center started when I was nine years old. I was onstage with Contra Costume Musical Theater's production of Carousel. And from that moment, the Lesher Center has been a really important part of my life and my growth as an artist and now as a business owner. My company, I run a children's performing arts company, and we have had the pleasure of renting the Lesher Center for the last decade. And I think what I really want to come here today to say and to convey to all of you is sort of piggybacking on what Cindy Silva said. And I think a big responsibility is going to be this new general manager position. And I really feel like this person obviously needs to be qualified, dynamic, but they really need to be different, and they really need to be fresh. Because I think what myself, as a business owner and a renter and a performer and my colleagues in the community theater worlds in this community, we really need someone from the outside who has no previous experience with anyone in the community, who can really implement these amazing strategies and bring a fresh take to the Lesher Center and make it a place where we feel is equal for everyone performing and renting, and a place where we all feel comfortable. So that's what I'd like to share. Thank you so much. I am really proud to be in a community that invests in the arts and makes it a priority. So I'm really, really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Any other speakers in the chamber? No, I'll turn to the city clerk for Zoom.
Yes, we have a couple speakers on Zoom. First speaker is Donato C.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Yes, hi. My name's Donato Cabrera. I'm the music director of the California Symphony. And I, I just have a question. First of all, thank you so much for this wonderful investment in, in the Devos. And, and Mr. Kaiser, he brings a wealth of experience that I have been following for many years, and it's truly, it will be a gift to the Walnut Creek community if, I shouldn't say if, when this plan is implemented in full. I have a, just a question maybe that Mr. Kaiser could delve in a little bit deeper with regard to, to programming. I, I'm noticing these other wonderful, great, for instance, the Great Lakes Center for the Arts, Villar Performing Arts Center, Ridgefield Playhouse, Music Hall, these four examples that you used. Could you talk a little bit about how these decisions are made with regard to who, to what comes in, how the season is programmed? I often have, your programming by committee can be, can be very helpful, but it can also be time-consuming, let's just say, let's put it that way. Maybe Mr. Kaiser could delve into that a little bit more.
So, thank you, Mr. Cabrera. Well, it's, we're still in public comment, but we'll take that question under advisement. And it looks like Mr. Kaiser would be prepared to answer it after we finish up public comment.
Okay. Next speaker is Daniel O.
Yep. Okay, we'll go to the next one and then bring it, bring it back and see if you can connect.
Okay, next is Lisa Dell.
I'm Lisa Dell, Executive Director for California Symphony. And as a former Walnut Creek resident, I can say that I very much enjoy the, the community, the welcoming nature of Walnut Creek, and what a pleasure it is that it has this crown jewel of the Lesher Center and what really is a draw to the whole region. As those that I've spoken to about my experience in Walnut Creek, I feel that it's a wonderful community. community, that it has potential to be beyond just a model center, but a model community as we come out of COVID. And as an arts presenter within the Leshur Center, I just want to say how thankful I am for Peggy and DRAA, Kevin and the city of Walnut Creek to really invest in the Leshur Center. As a presenter that is investing in the center as well, when the Leshur Center rises, we all rise. And I hear the conversation about silos within the Leshur Center. And as a cornerstone producer, I do not want to be siloed as well. I really appreciate the plan that Mr. Kaiser presented that includes us as a partner in this growth. Of course, the Leshur Center presenting its own series, but as one that brings in a symphony and is on its own artistic expansion and has its own nationally recognized programs within it, that to hear that the Leshur Center in itself is really taking the time to invest in its community and listen and hear of who is in the region and to present to the region, I just feel that we are moving in a similar direction and I look forward to continuing to be a partner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dell. Any other speakers? Madam Clerk?
No additional speakers, but we'll go ahead and try Daniel Levenstein again.
Obviously, you could always-
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can. Welcome.
Hi. So I guess you can't see me, but I'll just start. I am the director of Chamber Music San Francisco. We're proud to be one of your cornerstone producers. Also, I co-founded Smuan Ballets with Michael Smuan. And also, I started jazz at the Leshur and ran it for its first couple of years. Over the last 15 years, with the sponsorship of the DRAA, we have brought to the Leshur Center artists like Sarah Chang, Pecos Zuckerman, the Bezzards Trio, the Tokyo Quartet, Emerson Quartet, Garret Olson, Lynn Harrell, et cetera. This season alone, we're bringing Midori and Emmanuel Axe. And I'm happy to say that our concert series is as good as any in the world. New York, London, Berlin, Amsterdam, I don't care. We're competitive. And the cost of the sponsorship to the DRAA has been $15,000 to $25,000 a year and that's a turnkey funding. In other words, no further follow-up is necessary. I would call that a good bang for the buck. My purpose today is to respond to the report because although the DeVos Institute has created an otherwise very detailed and thorough report, we don't appear in it anywhere. Reading it, you'd never know that we existed. In fact, on page 21 of the strategic plan, they state that one thing that's missing in the Leshur's programming is, quote, "nationally recognized classical music." So I leave it to you as to whether we're fulfilling that role. And that's all. I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we do have one additional speaker.
Okay, please bring that person in.
Amy.
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. Thank you. My name's Amy Magory. I'm actually a resident of Walnut Creek and I have two kids in the Walnut Creek School District that are walking distance to Leshur Center. And I'm really excited about this plan. I happened to just see that there was a meeting today and I decided to join in. And I think this is going to be great for our community and the whole Northern California area. My kids can walk to the Bedford Gallery and the Leshur Center and we've loved having, going to performances and learning art through them. So I love the fact that you're going to continue to do the educational side. I also wanted to chime in and say that, you know, COVID has also created opportunities and I think I have brand management in my background and I think that there's an awesome opportunity to get great employees and heads of marketing because the cool thing with COVID is that we've learned that you might not need to have a full-time person five days a week that travels to Walnut Creek. You really have a wide ability to get somebody from anywhere near, in the San Francisco Bay Area to be interviewing for these positions. And I think this is going to be a really exciting position for somebody to take on. So thank you very much for doing this. I think it sounds really fun and exciting and I look forward to hearing the announcement in May and being part of it in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for calling in. Okay, we're gonna, do we have any other speakers?
No additional speakers.
All right. Then we're going to close the public comment period. And Mr. Kaiser, I believe there was, there was one question for you from Mr. Cabrero about, or a series of questions about programming.
Thank you very much. It was a really good question. We were not trying to suggest the programming committee creates the program, but rather the programming committee vets the programming. The people who will create the programming will be the artistic leadership of the center and the artistic leadership of the cornerstone producers. But because we'll have three years of lead time to work on it, there'll be lots of conversation, lots of discussion. And then when a program seems to make sense, when a whole set of programs does, the programming committee will vet those programs and decide if they think it's the best and appropriate. But it really will be left to the professionals, including the maestro who asked the question, to determine what the programming is.
Thank you. Councilmember Haskew.
It can tell I've been around this block a lot. I have one more question and that is, how do we, how do we deal with the fact that the cornerstone groups still have to compete for donations with the big picture? Or how do they fit in there so that we support each other? And I know you know the answer.
It's a challenge in every performing arts center, the fundraising of the center and the fundraising for the constituents who perform there. I certainly felt that at the Kennedy Center. And what we're trying to do here is to make it easier for the cornerstones to raise money by building their visibility. I think our new marketing approach is really going to boost their visibility in the community. So it will not be our fundraising versus theirs, but that there'll be many more people available to fund all of us. And that's really what the goal will be.
Thank you. It's nice to know I was right, that you knew the answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. So what we have before us is the strategic plan. We're receiving the plan and providing feedback or comments on it, not necessarily taking any action item per se. Why don't we start off with you, Councilmember Haskew?
Thank you. Thank everybody. Thank DRAA. Thank all the people that participated in the interviews. Thank you, council, for being and city staff for being open to looking at possibilities. And it is very exciting to see it develop and I think grow and turn into a really amazing, spectacular draw. And I'm going to remind the public that the better the theater does, the better our local economy does. Because people come to the theater, but they also come and have dinner. And occasionally, they'll throw in a shopping trip and they'll, they'll be at our hotels because they want to come and see it. So the decision to support the theater, as much as I adore the arts, is also an incredibly valuable economic producer for our city and makes it stronger and makes it possible for us to do other things potentially in other areas. I am just, but on my, I'm just kind of giddy. I'm so happy that this is beginning to take shape and form and I'm going to pledge that just like DRAA, I want to be one of the people that help make it happen. So count me in for whatever committee you need me on.
That's great. I think they will. Councilmember will.
Thank you. Again, thank you for all the work that you've done and staff as well, Kevin and Carolyn and everybody else who's been involved in this and of course, DRAA. It's a worthy and obviously a heavy lift project and I do think that something in terms of a reinvigoration is, is the time to be looking at this as we do what we can to get the next generations in there. Something we've talked about for years, how do we get other generations in here? And this is the time, our hands are being forced. Everybody's hands are being forced. And it's this going, it's going to be this kind of vision that's going to be looked at. Obviously, there's some specific logistics that are going to be have to be looked at, like how is the city's budget? How is this all going to work? But in terms of receiving this report, I think that this is the right path and direction to be discussing this and with this vision. And there's no doubt if what we're hearing is enticing to what actually ends up coming up and what everybody hears about in May, when you're talking about the next 18 months of schedule and programs, I think there's going to be a lot of excitement that happens. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Darling.
Thank you and thank you all for presenting today. I really appreciate the thought that's gone into this report. You know, Councilmember Haskew highlighted the impact it has on our community financially, but I also wanted to point out the emotional impact because there are, there's always kids in the elementary school that are, they need to find a home. And so having the arts viable in our community is an important part of making sure everybody finds a home somewhere in Walnut Creek. I do recognize that this program is, you know, it's got an ambitious five-year programmatic budget and it includes some key positions that we'll have to work with you to see how those positions are developed and how they're funded, you know? And we'll recognize it as an aspirational thing and we'll work with you towards that. But I appreciate the work you've put into this and I look forward to something in mid-May. Hopefully, it'll include margaritas at something. So thank you.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everyone who did all of the work over the last 18 months to bring these great ideas and this plan forward. It is truly monumental work, but it will be a monumental shift. It's time, we're ready, and I look forward to hearing more about it and very, very supportive.
I echo the comments. Thank you all for the great work, the collaboration over the years. I think bringing on Michael and his group was absolutely the right thing to do. I'm extremely impressed with his background, but also with the thoroughness of the report and the recommendations and excited. The Latin American festival that you mentioned a couple of times, you know, got me thinking of all the different programming you could do with that among all three levels of the center and bring in-
Margaritas.
Margaritas, yes. Margaritas and education and schools and there's things like that I think is exactly what we need to be thinking about. And I appreciate my colleague trying to get Hamilton here. But I, I think about even some of the musicals from the eighties and nineties now that we've seen at similar theaters in the Bay Area at Palo Alto. We saw Big River or American Idiot at Berkeley Rep and how I think those types of things are still fresh and relevant and would be received well at the Leshur Center. So, and I, I like the reimagining of, you know, the Newsmaker series, but also something like Inside the Actor's Studio or a TED Talk or, you know, kind of these conversations that I think are relevant and engaging for people and that'll bring people to the center in downtown. So thank you all. Great work. We look forward to seeing this move forward and continuing the great partnership. And with that, do you need a, would you like a formal motion to receive the report?
Staff is satisfied with the feedback that we've received, so we're, we're good.
All right. Thank you, Director Safin, and thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Enjoy. Kareem Abdul-Jabbar.[1727.91]